Special meeting, the date is Monday, October 11th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. I appreciate you all being here and would call us to order by asking if you are able to please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is the roll call. Would the clerk please take the roll call? Thank you.
Yep. Good evening, Council. Member Anderson?
Present.
Member Questa?
Present.
Member Russell?
Present.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Present.
Member Ward?
Present.
Member Wink?
Present.
Mayor Olson?
Present.
All seven present.
Thank you. Our first agenda item this study session tonight, oh, first of all, I wanted to tell you that we, the executive session at the end of the evening has been polled at this point, so we will not be addressing that tonight. Come back to us at a later time possibly. So overview of city's snow plowing and ice removal program is our first agenda up, which I think you're bringing on the snow. I heard it might snow later in the week. We have these discussions and then it snows. But our Director of Public Works, Maria DeAndre, Public Works Operations and Maintenance Manager, Steve Ortega, and Streets Supervisor, Nick Armbrust, are here to present and discuss a brief overview of the city's planned snow and ice response, as well as a review of the data for the 2021, 2020, 2021 snow season. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I, we've said the four-letter word, so it's starting. It may come this week, it may come next, but I have a feeling we're due here pretty quick. So just again, we'd like to give a brief overview of our snow and ice control program, both for the benefit of the audience, as well as the city council, just in the way that we do things. We have been tracking things in the last snow season quite a bit more closely, so we're going to go over those details too, and really start to establish a level of service and a level of detail in terms of the data that we collect in order to determine how well we're doing in terms of service to the community. So I'd like to introduce our staff here who we have tonight. First to my right is Chris Edelstein, who's our new Deputy Director of Operations and Maintenance. He comes to us from South Florida. So despite from being from Florida, he has experience with snow, being from kind of the upper New York area originally. Then to his right is Steve Ortega, who's our Public Works Operations Manager, and then on the far right is Nick Armbrust, who's our Streets Supervisor. So I'll hand it over to Steve.
Okay, thank you, Maria. So I just want to go over our program objective. So our objective is to provide for a safe and efficient flow of traffic within the city and maintain access for emergency response during periods of inclement winter weather. Excellent. Our program goals, number one, safety, number two, mobility, number three, maximize resource. A bullet under that is efficient use of resource. So I think it was last season or last, 2020, I think it was 2020, 2021, we implemented fleet staff into our program. So again, just having everybody within Public Works work together to accomplish the same, the same task. So that was, that was very beneficial to the operation as a whole. The other thing we did is conserve material and equipment. So back in 2019, we purchased a scale for our front-end loader. What that is able to do, it's actually able to weigh the material that we're loading into our trucks and the material that we're returning back into our salt dome, so that way we can know exactly how much material we're using. So doing both those things, this plan will lead to the cost-effective savings and consistent service for Inglewood citizens and the traveling public. The other big thing we did is we, we mapped the city out into four districts. So District One is located on the northwest of the city. District Two is on the northeast, District Three is on the southwest, and then District Four is on the southeast. And we have about 98.98 miles, lane miles of road that we treat. We got three classifications. So class number one, it's a storm that's predicted to last 12 hours or less with four inches of less of snow. We got a Class Two storm, which is predicted to last for more than 12 hours between four to eight inches of snow. And then our Class Three, which is our biggest snow events, anything over eight inches of snow, and then basically over 12 hours as well. So with that, I'll hand it over to Nick, and he'll go over the program a little bit more.
Thank you. Our primary streets are main thoroughfares and streets adjacent to schools and hospitals. We plow full lanes during each storm, and we use the center of the lane plowing from the yellow skip line all the way to the curb line. We remove snow after the storm has ended along Broadway and other parking lanes, and we only remove snow in other areas under severe conditions. Residential streets will not be plowed or de-iced unless they have steep hills with chronic icing problems or a snow emergency is declared. When accumulations are eight inches or above, the city will V-plow the center of all streets to allow one passable lane. The city does not replow as it buries the vehicles, driveways, and sidewalks that have already dug themselves out. We don't want to create more of a problem than we can suggest, and alleys are not plowed. Our ice removal operations, with the freeze-thaw cycles, we create large ice buildups, especially on areas and roadways with areas that are south-facing shades. Our crews are deployed 24 to 48 hours after the storm to address the ice buildup, because it creates hazards to motorists, pedestrians, and drainage backflows and the storm drain impacts. Our program resources, we have 18 staff members we utilize, 13 pieces of equipment. When we move and mobilize into our snow operations, it's a day and night shift, 24-hour coverage with 12 hours each. Right now, we're doing a 7:00 AM to a 7:00 PM and a 7:00 PM to a 7:00 AM shift. Our coordination's with other departments such as Parks and Rec, the Golf Course, and the Police Department. We also coordinate with other jurisdictions such as CDOT. An example here is US 85, US 285, Bellevue and Federal. We coordinate with Littleton and Cherry Hills, and on occasions, we also coordinate with Rappo County emergencies. And I'm gonna pass it over to Steve to let you know what we did. Last recap.
Thank you, Nick. So just to kind of recap a little bit of our data from 2020, 2021, we had nine Class One storm events. We had three Class Two storm events, and then we had two Class Three events. And then our historical trends, basically, we had 14 number of events from the 2020, 2021 season compared to 21 the season before. We had 31, or sorry, 34 deployments compared to 51, and then we received about 80 inches of snow compared to 57 inches the year prior. And then we treated about 13,092 lane miles compared to 14,000 the year prior. And then we used 681.18 tons of ice slicer compared to 884 the year prior. We brought that number down from our pound per lane mile, which we want to keep it right around 100 pounds per lane mile, down to 104 compared to 126 the year prior. Some of our equipment upgrades, so in 2020, 2021, we updated the LED headlights on all of our snowplow trucks. So before they had the incandescent lights, it was really hard for operators to see, so we did an update there again for safety. We replaced two of our snow plows. The plows that they currently have are real heavy. They wear out our blades fairly quickly, so we were able to replace two of those units and actually switch the blade plows as well. So that's been a huge plus. And then we installed some heater, heated sander lights to our, to our trucks as well. Some of the things that we're still working on right now to replace are the other two snow plows, which we should, we ordered them earlier this year. They should be coming relatively soon. And then we're going to upgrade all of our trucks next year. They're all due for replacement, and we're going to go from a single axle truck to a tandem axle truck. The cost difference is about $20,000 per unit, so we did include that in the budget for next year. But again, that's going to help us with our snow removal efforts as well as our other operations. And then one of the big things that we did is we purchased a sander for our little ATV that we use at the shop. So again, the guys do a great job with plowing the parking lot, but it just turns it into a sheet of ice, so we were able to get a sander to use for that. And with that, I just want to say thank you, and we'll open up for any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you for the presentation. Council, do you have questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Ward.
Can you define a replow? Because when you say you don't replow, it makes it sound like you only make one pass. What exactly is a replow?
Sure. When we say replow, we're actually talking about like the residential streets. So the main thoroughfares, we'll just use Broadway for an example, we're constantly going through that routine to make sure that that's safely traveled. Replow is like a residential street. I can't think of one off the top of my head, but when the storm subsides and we can actually get a truck through there safely, we don't want to go through there and have like a citizen shovel themselves out, and then we come back and replow everything back into their sidewalks, their driveways, their, their stuff like that. But obviously, if there's a situation where we need to come out, more than happy to, and we've had that on occasion.
So some of the streets that are defined as primaries are residential streets. Those get the same type of attention as Broadway would get, including replows, or are we not replowing those primary routes like Delaware and Tufts?
Yes, all the primary routes are routine, basically. So we're spinning, I think we did 98 lane miles, so that's the constant lane mile all the way through, so one pass throughout the whole city as the time progresses. And then Steve's actually going to show you the map real quick. So each one of those, I believe it's red lines on there, we do continually plow throughout the storm. The replow or the, I don't want to say neglecting, but the, the level of service for the residential streets drops off a little bit, because we want to make sure our main thoroughfares are clear for emergency services, for, you know, trash pickup or whatever the case may be for that day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two questions, and thank you, Mr. Ortega, Mr. Armbrust, for the presentation. So my first question is, I believe Eve has a separate contract for the plowing within the city center area. Are, do we do the streets within the city center area? There, there's just a separate contract for the sidewalks?
It's a separate area for the sidewalks and partial of the streets. I don't know exactly what street it is, but we do have some of the routes that do incorporate the majority of the civic center area, like the roundabout and stuff is Eve.
Okay, so the major streets that we have highlighted within this slide deck, those are done by the city?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And then second question, I, I believe last year, we happened to have a change order that came up because of using too many materials potentially. I believe, Mr. Ortega, you may have mentioned a new system where we would obviously watch that a little bit more closely. Can you elaborate on that?
Yes, so again, coming into the city, we were really kind of relying on our trucks to, our truck calibration to give us a good idea of how much material we're using, which is, which is good and bad. Sometimes those trucks get out of calibration. Obviously, as weather changes, we get really low temperatures, the augers tend to bind up. So really, when we switched over to our, our scale on our loader, that actually gives us a better idea. So right now, in the shop, we have roughly 680 tons of material on hand, so we're hoping, we still have about $20,000, a little short of that in the budget, just in case we need more than that. But we're really trying to anticipate the actual number that we're going to need for the year. So again, as we're, as we're collecting this data and the data that we just shared with you is what we're using to kind of guesstimate what we need per year.
And to elaborate on that, I'm sorry, to elaborate on that a little bit further, we're trying to be more proactive instead of reactive. For example, we just had a snow and ice conference up in Loveland, and there's a new product called Ice Kicker that's approximately the same price, but we can use it at a lower temperature. So our ice slicer is about 17 degrees, where our Ice Kicker, this new material that we're going to try to test out, is about five degrees. So hopefully, through innovation and stuff, we can kind of see the cost savings over time. We're still in trial and error phase of that, but we are documenting and trying to do everything we can to make sure we don't have that change order come through again.
Councilmember Wink.
I believe Director DeAndre may have wanted to say something. Did you?
I just wanted to make sure that answered Mayor Protem's question. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, team, for this presentation. I really love this sort of information coming from your department. And one of my questions is along the lines of our public information, you know, with this and other rather technical facets of our city, like the Southwest renewal partners and the utilities, et cetera. These pieces that our citizens probably think about very, very frequently and can digest pretty easily when presented in this way. So this slide deck, for example, what happens to it after tonight, you know, I, I don't mean to always encourage spending more money to share more via more methods with our citizens, but it just seems like tremendously helpful information for our citizens to know, like just as you have it laid out. So I'm kind of curious about your communications outward to the city with pieces like this.
Yeah, we could certainly upload this presentation to the city's website. On the, we have a snow and ice page dedicated, and this, this is somewhat laid out in there in various formats, but putting it all in the PowerPoint and adding that would be relatively easy and simple.
Great, thank you so much, and thank, good. Thanks for all of you coming tonight.
Absolutely, and just another follow-up, we actually do print out these books, and we do distribute this to our staff. So again, we're, actually tomorrow morning, we have our first kickoff meeting, so that's what's really nice. Every staff member gets a copy of this book. It goes over the districts, kind of the policies, procedures, expectations, so on and so forth. So it's nice, because we do a, what we call a Poe, or a pre-season kind of meeting, and then we do what we call like a mid-season, kind of check-in, see what's working, what's not working. And then we do an end-of-season where we then get together again, and we kind of talk about what worked, what didn't, and make some changes from there. So we definitely get involved, we get our staff involved quite a bit.
Good, thank you. I also think it's great that your team is able to attend conferences and learn and develop as you're working. It's so critical, so thank you.
Councilmember Questa.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Ortega and Mr. Armbrust, thank you. That was a really good presentation and a lot of data in it. Going back to the historical trends slide, in 1920, there were 57 inches of snow and 51 deployments. And then in 2021, 80 inches of snow and 34 deployments. Can you explain that to me a little further of why there was, and I imagine it's the snow patterns, but could you explain the difference between the two?
Sure, absolutely. The number of events is the actual start and beginning of a snow cycle, so the event could particularly start on a Monday, and say it snows Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, that would be all considered one event with multiple deployments. I'm sorry, with multiple deployments within that timeframe. The amount of snow, we had that one snowstorm in March that was approximately two, three, or eight feet, or however much it ended up being. That's where we got a lot of our deployments from and a lot of those inches. We're just trying to be as cognizant with the budget and trying to only send out the minimum amount of deployments for the maximum amount of resources we have, if that makes sense what I'm trying to say.
Sure, it does.
Yeah, and the other thing is temperature. So even though we got less snow in 2019, 2020, temperature really drives the amount of material that we use. So you could have a two-inch, you know, a two-inch storm, and you could have probably four or five deployments, again, just depending on temperature. Then you could have a storm where you get 20 inches of snow, and you maybe only have two, because next day, the sun comes out, right, and, and melts it all. So it really just kind of depends on the storm and, and what's going on with, with the temperature.
Very good, thank you. You know, for me, one of the fundamental purposes of government is just providing a functional city, and navigable roads are paramount to that. And so I appreciate the work you guys do here, and I really appreciate the reduction in the, the ice slicer used from the 1920 season to 2021. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I also have a question.
Sorry. I just wanted to clarify the deployments, is a deployment a 12-hour shift?
Typically, yes. If we have a normal snow pattern deployment, we do transition to a 12-hour shift. If we can minimize that, say, for example, the, the sun starts coming out at lunchtime, and we can end that into an eight-hour shift and minimize the overtime, then we take advantage of that. But typically, it's a 12-hour shift.
But that would still use the term deployment. One deployment would count, whether it was eight or 12 hours.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That's right. I do have a question, and it shows where I grew up. I grew up in a place where lots of salt and other things were used. And you wouldn't wait for the sun to come out, because if it did, it only made it colder, it seemed right, Maria. So I'm wondering about this new material. Does it have an impact on cars? And I mean, rust was where, I grew up in rust areas of the Midwest.
Absolutely. Doing the research and what the, the conference that we were learning about, the environmental impact is approximately the same, because it is a salt-based material, but it's a little bit less corrosive. It takes a little bit less neutralizer after the fact on our equipment and so forth. We haven't been able to actually utilize it. We've just seen before and after pictures of different areas. I believe Utah was one of the places that they had used it. And really, the only difference they saw was a lower temperature melting point, and it's actually a blue material. Other than that, there really was no difference, other than the amount of material being able to be used.
So in terms of damaging cars, do we need, is there anything more people need to do to keep from getting rusted cars?
Yeah, we, we still encourage people to wash their cars afterwards, and it's just a good practice to get into, to, to neutralize, as Nick mentioned, to get the salt and whatever ice slicer material off of their vehicles as soon as possible.
It's a good thing to also, and Member Wink suggested some communication thing, maybe social media during this time would be good, remember to wash your cars, you know, when it starts to melt, and of course, that's when it really splashes, but, but yeah. So I, I too would really encourage, our communication department, you know, has done such a bang-up job on a number of things of getting the word out, and they could just put out that one slide of this is what it looks like on days that we have a, and explain what an event is. Because that's, a lot of people pick up on things via
Sure, absolutely.
The different modes there, and then it doesn't cost you anything.
Absolutely, and we're always open to feedback, and we're trying to get better pretty much with every, every deployment and every mid-season and end-season check-in. So your feedback is greatly appreciated. We'll make sure that we follow up with that.
My neighbors wouldn't want me to say this, but I don't mind if you miss my street, because I like to go cross-country skiing on it. But I'm sure my neighbors would like that, okay. I'm going to be out soon, so. Any other, oh, Member Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. So in terms of cost, is the ice slicer more expensive than the ice kicker?
When we buy it in mass quantities, like the 681 thou, 681 ton, it's approximately like a 20 cent difference in tonnage. We recently just purchased some that was about $4 more a ton, but we only purchased five ton, just to get the test method cycling. So over the course of a season, it would be approximately the same.
So it's just, the main thing is the temperature at which you can use it and the effectiveness.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, I don't see any more questions, so let's move on to the next one. All four of you are staying for this one too, right, which is Agenda Item Five. It's overview of city's curb-to-curb street sweeping program, which our streets got swept last week, and a lot of my neighbors said, "Thank you very much." They were glad you were doing it. So again, our Director of Public Works, Maria DeAndre, Public Works Operations and Maintenance Manager, Steve Ortega, and Streets Supervisor, Nick Armbrust, Armbrust, is my saying that correctly?
Yeah.
Are here to present in the brief overview in the city's biannual curb-to-curb street sweeping program.
Yes, thank you. So just a quick, brief, before I'll let Steve and Nick take over again. So this is relatively new, so we haven't been sweeping curb-to-curb typically in the past. Before, a year ago fall, we were sweeping in and around cars. So we've become more diligent as a result of our issues with, with the stormwater program. So really, that was a decision to remove cars so we could get as close to the curb as possible twice a year, to remove as much of the material prior to it getting down into the catch basins and into our storm sewer system. So with that, you guys.
Good, thank you, Maria. So our program overview, so all city streets are swept five times per year. Three of those are routine sweeps, so again, that means we just go around vehicles or anything that's parked in the curb line. And then two of them consist of our curb-to-curb, and we really call those our deep cleaning cycles. We do one in spring, typically around May if weather allows, and then our fall, which we're currently doing now, but that's typically around November. And then again, that's all depends on weather and resources permitting, so. Our program objectives, so it's to remove the accumulated sediment and debris before it enters the storm sewer system and our waterways. And that results in less material in storm sewers, improved air quality, and then improves aesthetics. So here on the slide, we kind of show a photo of our, one of our catch basins. So again, what we're trying to do with our curb-to-curb sweep is remove all that debris on top before it enters in our basin itself and then collects at the bottom. So to Maria's point, we do go out there and we're cleaning the bottoms now with our new program that we're, that we're doing. But again, our, our whole purpose is try to remove all that as much as possible before it gets down there. So with that, I'll hand it over to Nick, and he'll kind of go over the program details.
Our sweeping program, as you see, is broken down, our sweeping program, as you see, is broken down into five districts. These districts are aligned with our pavement maintenance zones. Area One is the northeast, Area Two is the southwest, Area Three is the central, Area Four is our southeast, Area Five is our north industrial and our southwest. Our curb-to-curb sweeping map, here's an example. Area One, Day One, is in the green highlighted lines, and Day Two is the red highlighted lines. We place no parking signs a minimum of 24 hours prior to our operation of being there to sweep the street. The parked vehicles, the vehicles that are parked in the no parking areas are moved across the street or around the corner by a third-party towing company. No tickets are issued and no fines or fees are imposed, and our street staff make every effort to notify the vehicle's owner before the vehicle is moved. We also document everything as far as taking pictures before we even try to move the vehicle or after the vehicle is placed back. Our community outreach, we have dual-language door flyers distributed to each property. We use variable message board placed in key locations, and we use the city website and social media posts. Here's an example of one of our door flyers. We distribute these approximately one week before we start sweeping. On the front of it is English and on the backside is Spanish. Here's an example of our current sweeping program that we're actually involved with right now. Today's the 11th. So as you see on that first green arrow, we completed Area One, Day Six. Our program this year started October 4th, and we hope to end it November 15th with weather permitting. This is just a little snippet of our schedule. As you can see, we have every day planned out. We also have makeup days, so we can stay on the schedule as much as possible and not deviate or have to over-outreach the community again. So we have makeup days scheduled. We try to get it through November 15th, and a couple days after November 15th are makeup days. So trying to get everything wrapped up basically for Thanksgiving, if the weather cooperates, and hopefully it does. Steve's going to lead us into how we did in our 2021 spring update.
Good, thanks, Nick. So during our spring cleanup, we were able to sweep 214 lane miles. It took us 27 working days to complete our entire sweep. We spent 1,284 labor hours to accomplish this task. This is the first time within, I think it would spend two or three cycles, that we were able to keep our overtime down to zero. So that was, again, us having these pre, mid, and end-season meetings, really getting feedback from staff and, and really trying to improve cycle after cycle. We were able to remove 139 tons of debris. So again, that's the debris that was able, that we were able to capture before it went into the catch basin and our storm sewer system. Believe it or not, we only received six complaints or questions. We do keep track of that as well. Our fall, our fall sweep last year was pretty rough, obviously, because of the year, but this is information that we take in, because again, we really want to improve operations as a whole. So we need feedback, we need honest feedback, and, and we really need to look at it from a management standpoint and really make adjustments. And then we were able to, we only had to move about 42 vehicles. So with that, just want to say thank you, and we're open to any questions you may have.
Thank you for the presentation. Council, do you have questions or comments, feedback? Councilmember Ward.
One of the questions I got while I was out canvassing this week was, why do we sweep in the winter? So if you could elaborate a little bit on how that benefits the community, I think the question would be answered.
I'm sorry. Yes, sir, absolutely. The hardest part with our fall sweep is trying to capture when we sweep before the leaves fall or after the leaves fall, or whether the snow falls yet or not yet. It's kind of a roll of the dice when we're making our yearly schedule. This year, we decided to try to do it a little bit ahead of time. As you see, we're getting snow, or hopefully maybe to snow this week, and a lot of the leaves that fall. With that, we also try to come back after we do our curb-to-curb in any areas that need to have, that we, that we swept before the leaves fell, we will come back and, and get that cleaned up. So to answer your question, it's kind of a roll of the dice. We're trying to maximize resources while minimizing the impact to the community and our, and our budget and labor force.
And, and just to elaborate a little bit on that as well, is, is we, we do really a fall sweep to try to minimize the amount of debris in our spring. So if we left it and we came back in spring, it's probably going to take us twice as long, because we're going to have double the debris out there. So really, we try to be a little bit more proactive. We know that we're never going to hit it right on the money. We're either going to be too early or too late, but we're definitely going to make that attempt. So that's one of the main reasons why we sweep during the winter months.
And the purpose is largely to prevent things from going into the storm drain or accumulating in other places, or just to beautify the city, or all three?
All three, really, yes. And, and really, most importantly, to keep that debris from entering that storm sewer system. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, I think, and then Member Anderson, or, you were first. Okay, go ahead, Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Ortega and Mr. Armbrust. The question I have is regarding the, the times where you sweep, but there's no notice given, and you go around the cars. You have that scheduled out pretty well, I, I assume, and maybe there's some flex days, like you said, and that kind of thing. Is it possible to Is it possible to, to make some kind of a, a notification where, where people could sign up for something to get notified when their street's going to be swept or something to that effect? So if people did want to move their cars, they could, because I'm sure there's, there's some streets with a lot of cars on them. They don't know it's coming. And the whole, the whole curb gets skipped. And I think maybe you would get some volun-, quite a bit of cars voluntarily moved if it was made available or that information was available to them.
Yeah, we'll certainly, uh, explore that of how we could do that better. It is on the website, those interim routine sweepings. But you know, you're not necessarily going out there and checking that every week either. So maybe a combination of the VMS boards and even like a social media post saying not necessary, but would love your help to move in this particular area might be something we could easily do.
If it could be like a, you know, you sign up for an email notification or something like that, then
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem Sierra.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you again, Mr. Ortega, Mr. Armbrist for the presentation. A couple of questions. Is there a reason why we don't turn those three routine, uh, sweeping events into the curb-to-curb?
Absolutely. The manpower that it takes for us to drop the no parking signs and collect the data and then haul the material off. The routine cycles, we can pretty much do a routine cycle in approximately a week and a half to two weeks with two people. Our curb-to-curb cycle is about six weeks with eight to ten people. So just the labor force in itself, we're trying to maximize those resources.
Okay. And then I guess the second question is honestly, I, I'm not a big fan of us towing a person's vehicle and moving it to the opposite side of the road. Excuse me, opposite side of the road. Um, you mentioned there that there were six complaints and questions. Uh, do any of those pertain to a car being moved? And I guess what's the breakdown of those six? Are three complaints, three questions or?
Sure. I actually have the breakdown right now. We had two people that were just inquiring about what we were doing and why we were doing that. I was able to show them that slide about the, uh, the storm drain and explain the process. Uh, two questions were when we were actually going to be able to come through and, uh, plan, and I was able to direct them to our schedule. And the two were basically exactly what you said, where they didn't like their vehicle being moved. Uh, on those occasions, we do have several people that are ahead of our street sweeper, knocking on doors, trying to get everybody's notification right then and there. Um, some people are, you know, working at home, can't get out there. Some people are sleeping and trying not to disturb them. So we're trying to create that fine line balance of doing our job proficiently, but trying to move, uh, trying to have the less impact on the, the citizens. And we're very cognizant of that.
Perfect. I appreciate that. Thank you. I have a couple more questions, but I'll let the other members of council ask.
Member Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, and this kind of goes along with the councilmember Anderson and the Mayor Protem. Um, Denver actually has street signs that don't park on Thursday afternoon or whatever. And so is it possible to work out a system where you would routinely be going to the same neighborhoods? Put the signs up. You wouldn't need to be knocking on people's doors and putting street signs out all the time. And I mean, I know it would take, uh, probably a cycle to get street signs put up. But if we had a routine schedule, that would save a lot of man-hours.
Yeah, we're actually exploring that. There are, um, some pros and cons to that. So let's say we signed everything for Thursdays, just as an example. We would have to stick to Thursdays. So we have a little bit of flexibility right now due, for weather, um, in our schedule. But the other facet is the cost to put those up, those permanent signs. And I believe Nick has gotten an estimate on that. So I'll let him follow up on that.
Yes, ma'am. I actually went through and counted. We need, would need approximately a thousand to twelve hundred signs to be put in the ground. And basically cradle to grave, it'd be about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out the door price to get all those signs installed. So that's definitely an option that we are exploring.
Um, and so along those lines, are, we need to keep track of the man-hours and all the cost it's costing to do the other things manually. So I mean, I think it's something that we could rotate into, um, the schedule over time.
Yeah. So we have to look at it, so over a number of years. So we, if we're saving X number of labor hours, but it costs us two hundred and fifty thousand and we can drop our labor hours by that much, there may be at some point a co-, a cost break-even point of X number of years. So we're still working on that math. And that was a council request tracker that's current right now that we're working on.
Great. Uh, Mayor Protem Sierra.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate Member Russell's, uh, question. I do agree with the efficiencies we may see. Um, so then just a question regarding the schedule. I just want to make sure. So it says that we dropped the door hanger a week before we actually start the street sweeping. So if you are in area five, it is one week before that. You're not dropping all the door hangers on October fourth. It is one week for each of the, uh, different areas.
That's correct. So for example, in this calendar right here. I'm getting older. Can't see that far, sorry.
None of us can actually see that far. We're having the luck here.
It's not you.
So, uh, excuse me, November fifth, we'd be starting area five. We wouldn't door flyer area five until probably the last week of September. Or excuse me, last week of October. So we're only hitting that area about a week, ten to, five to ten days before we're actually in that area. So we don't raise ca-, uh, raise, uh, chaos. So people don't know what we're doing. So.
And then day six is, day six is when you leave the norpar-, no parking signs and then day seven is when you actually do the sweeping.
Yes.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. I wanted to follow up on the question about putting up signs. Um, part of that would mean that we'd start ticketing, right? We'd, you'd have to tow. And that's the other thing that I, I can't imagine our citizens being really excited about being towed to a park, to a lot or something.
I thi-, I think some of, again, kind of those, we still would, we just, we wouldn't necessarily tow. We'd probably tow around the corner again.
Doing now.
Doing something similar. Um.
I mean, that's what Denver does. If you're not, if you're not out of there, your car's gone.
They're pretty hardcore about it. Yeah. I, I think, um, so we could still probably tow around the corner or something. There still probably would be that. I think the benefit of having a more permanent sign is that people see it more. So the signs we put, place are fairly low. And sometimes we get concerns or complaints about, oh, I didn't see it because it's behind parked cars. We put four out per, per long block, three on the side streets, and people still don't see them. So there may be some benefit to having those higher, that people would see that more and be more conscious of what their particular schedule is for their streets.
Sounds good. So will you come back to us again after this last cycle and say, you know, how it went and how many tons you took again and, and what the complaint level was? I, I did not hear any complaints in this last go-around. The one before, yes, but you probably, but there were only how many? Four? Six? I think they must all called me, but they probably called all of us. But I, yeah, if that's all there was, I'm kind of, I'm actually kind of surprised. Seems to be working.
And that's why we do do, we want to do these types of presentations because we know that the councilmembers get a lot of questions as well. They don't, we're just tracking the ones that we receive, um, in-house. So I think, but to your point, the fall of twenty twenty, we were right in the middle of COVID. We received a significant number of calls. That was the first time we had really done this, um, pretty thoroughly. And so there were a number of concerns. And so we, we've seen that drop off dramatically. But yes, to your question, or to your question, Mayor, we will be coming back with data again based on the fall curb-to-curb. And then following up through that council request tracker on the permanent sign question.
Did you have anybody call you and give you positive feedback on this by chance? Did you? Okay. I'd love to hear what that was because I told someone to call you. I don't know. And it was somebody who got their car, they said valeted. And I said, what do you mean? They moved my car. I'm, I came from Denver and they would have towed it and I would have paid a lot of money in your city. Valeted my car over to the other side. I don't, did they call you?
I don't know about that particular one, but we do get, uh, kudos, uh, frequently of our employees coming out and actually trying to engage with the citizen instead of just moving their vehicle by happen chance. Um, so we do get a lot of positive feedback too, and we'll continue to start tracking that as well.
Right. Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any more questions or comments? Seeing none. Thanks for being here tonight. Appreciate it. All right. Agenda item, that was five, right? So this is six. Update on the backflow prevention and cross-connection control program. So tonight, utilities and South Platte Renew Director Peter Van Rye is here to present and discuss an update on the backflow prevention and cross-connection control program. I guess you have one of your engineers here too.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. With me tonight is Angela Goodman. She's a deputy director over operations and maintenance for utilities and she is, uh, taking point on, on this, uh, issue for utilities. Uh, it's involving a, it involves a number of staff.
Pull it, pull it just a little bit closer.
It involves a number of staff, uh, that are working on this issue. And, um, but she's, um, coordinating it all to ensure that we, that we actually meet compliance. Okay. So if you recall, let me get this going. Nope, wrong way. If you recall, uh, earlier, late, late August, um, all citizens of the city of Englewood received a mailer that, uh, noticed the, um, a violation of our backflow and cross-connection compliance ratio. So this is a paperwork violation that we received from the state. Because of the type of violation, we had to provide a notice to everyone in the city. So we are here tonight to talk about what happened there and what we're doing to ensure that we don't have that issue again. So we'll, we'll go through what a, what the program is and what we're doing to, uh, ensure that we meet compliance, uh, this year. So our backflow program is a state-regulated program. Um, it actually is, is something that's, uh, that actually comes down from the, from the EPA. It's the drinking water. And, and so essentially what a backflow is, is it prevents a back siphoning into the distribution system. So if someone has some kind of an industrial process or some kind of a, a, um, underground process and there's, there's a, there's a negative pressure in the distribution system, a backflow is a, is a device that stops water that might be connected to that process, that industrial process from backfeeding into the system. So they are important aspects of, of the, uh, distribution system. And they require annual testing. And, and this has been a, uh, program that has been in development. Uh, we've been ramping up the testing over the past several years to get to the point where we're meeting the compliance ratios required by the state of Colorado. In twenty twenty, so December, by December thirty-first of twenty twenty, we had a compliance ratio requirement of eighty percent and we did not make it. Um, we only ended up getting to about sixty percent. And there was a number of, uh, issues that contributed to that. One of the most significant of which was we had a longtime employee who was managing this program who suddenly passed away. And, and with, with the loss of that employee, we lost the records and the process by which this was being, um, uh, tracked. And so we had about six weeks to try to pull together the information that we could to, to meet the compliance ratio by the end of the year. And we, we failed to meet that, um, that, that eighty percent requirement by December thirty-first. An actual timeline of what we, what we did with that, um, uh, violation was we missed the deadline on December thirty-first. By January twenty twenty-one, we were in contact with CDPHE to figure out what we needed to do to come into compliance. Um, we sent reminders to customers in March. And by May third, um, we sent, we sent CDPHE a report showing that we were at seventy-seven percent compliance. So we were almost at that eighty percent. By May fourteenth, we hit eighty percent. So we're, we're now in compliance by May fourteenth. CDPHE issued us a violation on July twenty-eighth. And then we have thirty days to public notice on that violation. We got confirmation from CDPHE on August twenty-fourth that we, um, were back in compliance. And, uh, we issued, we then issued the notice to everyone. And so that's the postcard you got in the mail saying we violated this ratio. The, the, the challenge with this ratio is it, it depends on the customer. And so what we do is we ensure that the testing is being done, but we don't do the testing. We require the commu-, the, the customers to do the, the actual testing of their backflows. So their job is to proactively go out, test their backflow and send us the results. Our job is to ensure that those backflows are being tested and then the results are being sent to us. And that's the compliance ratio is how many of our total system documented, uh, backflow preventers that we have in the system, how many of those did we get test results from the, from the community to ensure compliance? Well, as we get to two, in twenty twenty-one, um, we've made some, we've made a number of adjustments to ensure that we, uh, don't have this issue again. Uh, we have a new database. One of the, the things that we found is the database was, was, was really, it needed a lot of cleanup. And so we've done a lot of work of scouring that database, checking with, um, with devices in the field, ensuring that we're not counting devices that may have been removed in the past to clean up the database. We've cross-trained multiple staff. This is no longer with one individual. We have multiple individuals that are familiar with this so that we have, um, so that we're sure that there's coverage in case something goes wrong. Uh, we have hired a regulatory compliance coordinator. This was not only driven by the backflow issue, but the other issue that occurred in August that we, uh, experienced with the state as well as other compliance issues that, um, you may have seen in the, the CCR report relative to our tank inspection. All of those were pointing to the fact that we had a decentralized process by which we were, uh, dealing with these compliance issues. We have hired a, a compliance, environmental compliance person. So those are now centralized. We have one person tracking all this so that we're not now, um, assuming things are being done in particular areas. So that has really helped us to put together a strategy to ensure that these types of issues moving forward do not occur. And then we've also, uh, utilized our red tag and shut-off protocol to ensure compliance. So where we are right now, um, is, so for twenty twenty-one, our compliance ratio ratchets up to ninety percent. And by three months into twenty twenty-two, we need to be at a hundred percent. So for all practical purposes, by the end of the year, we have to be at a hundred percent. And that's ensuring that a hundred percent of those devices get tested annually and then that information is provided to us. I've gotten updated information. Currently, we are at seventy-four point three percent for, uh, by, for twenty twenty-one, which means by December twenty, December thirty-first, we need to, we need another sixteen point, fifteen point seven percent to achieve compliance. We have taken a much more proactive approach to talking to our customers about this. So we eat, we mailed a letter to all customers that had not provided their, their tests on September sixth. We have followed up with a phone call to every single one of those customers. That's three hundred and fifty-two accounts. We were able to talk to two hundred and one of those accounts, people from those accounts. And then we have a hundred and fifty-two that we have now put into a, what we're, we're calling it a tier one, which is, um, which will result in an onsite visit from one of our staff to make sure that they know that this is something that needs to be done by the end of the year. Uh, we were informed that seventeen facilities have this scheduled. So we're, they're, we have their backflow testing scheduled. However, we now have not put it into the, um, database yet. We have met directly with Seadish, Swedish and Englewood schools the week of the fourth to ensure that their database and our database match and that they're in compliance since they are such large users. And then, um, we have an issue with the Marx apartments that we're working through. There's an installation challenge. There's an, there's an incorrect installation that needs to get fixed, um, that we're working with them. We're not sure if that'll get done by the end of the year, but that could fall into that ninety percent, that remaining ten percent that has some flexibility to go into the beginning of next year. So what this all means is, uh, if we get to the point where, um, by the end of this month, October twenty-fifth, if we're not getting response from customers on this, on this testing requirement, our plan is to issue or, uh, put a door hanger, a red tag out there informing them that two weeks later, if we still don't have any, uh, if we don't have their compliance or a plan for them to become compliant, we will shut off their water. And so that's a way that we can actually become a hundred percent compliant because at that point in time, we disconnected them from the system, at which point we no longer, um, that's the, that's the barrier that the backflow is, is trying to produce. It's now, it's just, we're closing the valve to their, to their water. We don't want to do that. We're, we're trying everything in our power through multiple outreaches with our customers We're, we're trying everything in our power through multiple outreaches with our customers to, to get them into compliance on this. However, there's going to be a point in time that if, if we cannot get people to, to comply with this requirement, that we don't see another alternative other than the, the alternative of shutting them off. So I wanted to bring this to council so that you were all aware of what are, what we're doing to correct the issue so that we don't have to send out a violation letter again. And at the same time, recognizing that there may be an impact to customers. This is industrial, commercial and multifamily customers in the city. And so with that, I will open it up any feedback or questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Councilmember Wink start us off.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Van Rij. I actually have a question for City Manager Lewis. So based on this incident of the gentleman passing and then our not being in compliance and, but you know, thank you very much for all you did, given the time you had, Director Van Rij, I understand. But are we able to develop a citywide sort of departmental inventory of any mission critical, any other mission critical processes that are historically reliant on one or maybe two peep individuals? Or reliant on non-electronic tracking, right? Some manual process that, that could easily get thrown off or, you know, get interrupted for some reason. It doesn't have to be a death. And so that we can preserve those critical functions in the city. That's kind of where my head is right now.
Thank you for the question. That's a great question. You know, I think our, the basis for that is really our, our COOPS, our continuation of operations plans. I think I just botched that up. Continue, anyway. That is really where we take a critical look at all of our, you know, the jobs that have a critical function, particularly in emergency situations, but really even, you know, other than that, day-to-day operations. What I'll say is that we've had many years of what I will try to carefully say as hands-off leadership in this particular department that I think has rapidly changed over the last two years. And so I think that this was definitely something that caught the attention of the director and they immediately put a plan in place to look at all of their functions to see what, you know, they need to do to make sure this doesn't happen again. I will say, you know, similar activities have been undertaken in some of our other mission critical departments as well. But those COOPS are really where we kind of try to look on an annual basis about, you know, where we may have gaps, where one person knows all there is to know about one subject.
Okay, so this is already underway. And I do thank Director Van Rij for everything that he's done and that he just explained with regards to South Platte Water Renewal Partners and the Utilities Division. But elsewhere, you feel certainly confident that historical knowledge isn't resting on one human? More offline, more importantly.
I do, and it's something that, yeah, we'll put on our leadership team meeting for topics of discussion. So thanks for bringing it up.
Thank you, Director, or City Manager.
I think that next was Mayor Protem Sierra. Nope, it's all over there. Okay. I see it out of my right. So let's start with Councilmember Questa and then we'll just go on down the line.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Van Rij. I'm trying to get an understanding of who is subject to meeting this standard with, within our, our users. Is it just industrial users?
It's commercial, industrial and multifamily. And that's multifamily more than like a duplex.
Do you know how many of those we have total throughout the city?
Do we have that distribution?
Give or take even.
Is this the total amount or is this the? I'm going to turn this over to Deputy Director Goodman.
So of the, of the users that have outstanding devices, there are 196 commercial, two of those are grocery stores. There's four industrial. There's two that are mixed use, which is commercial and multifamily. There's one mobile home park, four multi, or sorry, 45 multifamily, five municipal. And that actually does include some City of Englewood facilities that we're currently working with them to, to help achieve compliance. Two schools that are not Englewood schools. And then 12 that we're trying to sort through the records to see they're actually mislabeled as single family. So those are kind of to be determined, but I believe that they are kind of just some smaller businesses that got mislabeled.
Thank you, and that's helpful. So none of this falls on single family?
No.
Very good. Were we held to the same standard in 2019 and we passed?
We were held to a 70% compliance ratio in 2017. So the program itself started in 2016 was the first year and we did not achieve compliance that first year. I don't know that there were a lot of people since it was brand new. In 2019, we did achieve, achieve that compliance and 2020, we, we did not.
Understood. And so if I'm just understanding correctly, so it sounds like 2019, it was 70%?
Correct.
2020, 80%? And now it's 100% for 2022?
Correct.
Gotcha.
Did I say that right? It goes up 10% every year.
Okay, excuse me, thank you. I, it's a high bar, 100% on anything to be sure. And so I, I appreciate the work you guys are trying to do on that. That answers my question right now. Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilmember Russell. Go on down.
Actually, Director Van Rij, did you have a response that?
All I was going to say is, is because of the missed compliance in 2016, the state allowed us to ratcheting up implementation of this. So it went, so it went up every 10%, 10% every year until, which gave us a five-year period to then come into full compliance. So we missed it in 2016. So they allowed for communities to implement programs to achieve compliance. I think the, the issue with, what we found is the databases was, the database was a lot of handwritten paper files, things like that. And it wasn't necessarily matching with the database that was our electronic database. So a lot of this work has been, you know, if, if your denominator is the wrong number, then your percent is always going to be off. And so what we're trying to do is we're trying to get that, that number so that we're, we're sure that the number of devices is actually accurately the number of devices in the field. And then we can ensure that our compliance ratio meets those, those goals.
Thank you for that. And so my questions are, so the database that you're working on to store and track, will it at some point, once it's 100% accurate, be able to generate for staff who hasn't complied yet? And so you know who to contact?
That's the goal is ultimately to get this on a, on an annual basis. There's, there's a couple of things. So the database, you get it cleaned to get it so that it annually, as new, as new devices come in, they make it into the database. And then we have a, a continual report out ability of where we are from a compliance perspective at any point in time. The other thing we're doing is we're moving this all up by six months. So everybody who's doing their testing this year in the September, October timeframe is going to get a letter in April, May of next year to say, hey, it's time to test your backflow again so that we can hit the compliance number by June. And we're not at the last 30 days of the year trying to scramble to get people to test water devices that are outside in the winter. And so we're, we're, we're backing this all up. And this is part of some experience that some of our new employees who've worked at other agencies have done is that their, their agency has this all complete by June or July at the latest so that they have the next four, five to six months to ensure that anything that's, that doesn't seem right in the compliance ratio is being addressed.
And so once all the database and all that information is generated automatically, if you have a turnover in an employee that was doing that, it would be obvious to the next person that came in?
That is the plan. I think from a, from a, this is not just Utilities Department, but South Platte Renew, one of the things that we, we talk about is we want systems to survive people. And so we want a system in place that has enough people that understand it so that if one person decides to go off and do another, take another job somewhere, we don't just lose the ability for that system to immediately translate to whoever the next people are to, to handle it. So that's our, that's our goal ultimately with these systems.
Thank you. And then just, so the process of how you're doing it, once that's all established and then the penalty and the shut off, if we're notifying people in enough time to take care of it, so I guess what would the process be? If you shut someone off, they're not going to get turned back on until they've had the inspection, correct?
That is the, that is the plan. We, we are, we will work with people. So if, if, if we shut someone off and say, I've got this scheduled for a week and a half from now and, and we get confirmation that it actually is scheduled and there's just an issue of, of the providers that actually do this testing don't have time until a week and a half later, we'll work with those, we'll work with anybody on that. It's really the ones where we're getting no response, we're, we're getting no contact, there's no, there's no information from that we would, that we will, that we plan to use the shut off with. If, if people are working with us and, and we're verifying and trusting that that's actually occurring, we'll, we'll work with them.
And I mean, so hopefully all of our essential facilities like hospitals and, and things like that are generally pretty diligent.
That's correct. And that's why we're actually meeting, that's why we met with them directly. Because frankly, for a backflow thing, we don't want to shut the hospitals off for a backflow thing. We don't think that that's necessarily the best thing to do. So we, we've proactively gone out to talk to them to ensure that whatever, and, and they're, they're working with us too. They understand that this is a requirement. They, it's not, it's not a surprise to them.
Right. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Van Rij. I was going to ask about the, the ratcheting time scale and most of those questions have already been answered. The other question I had was regarding requiring that they fulfill this process to hire someone to come out and test. Is this a fairly technical thing or is there, is there some reason that we don't do the testing for them or provide that as a kind of expensive last option to fulfill the process before shutting them off?
I think, so we could do that. I think there's a, there's a cost to, to doing that. And then there's a, there's a, now we assume more liability at that point in time. I think it, it's a fairly, it's, it's a fairly common practice. There's a number of these providers out there that you, you, you call them up to test the backflow. This is what they, this is what they do. I think that if we get into a situation where someone is, is really, has no other alternative, then we could potentially look at providing that service on a, on a very unique case-by-case basis. But right now, we don't have it factored into our workload or our budgets to actually do this kind of work. And, and it's consistent with the industry. The industry typically, you know, this is what the customer has a responsibility and we just, we ensure compliance with the, the requirement.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Protem Sierra.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Director and Deputy Director Goodman for coming to speak to us on this important subject. I'm just curious about the, how the points of contacts differ between the multifamilies, commercial and industrial. So are we talking to the homeowners per multifamily, anything? I believe you said it was three or more units. Is it the homeowners that you're speaking to in, in order to get, get to compliance? And how does that differ between that and commercial and industrial?
I'm going to take a first stab at this and then I'm going to turn it over to Angela just to make sure that I, I don't get this wrong. We're using, we're utilizing the contact information that we have to, to, as an initial point to contact. And we're, you know, in some circumstances, we're, we're looking up the phone number, you know, through Google for the actual organization so that we can get a more direct number to, to contact them. Ultimately, as it relates to like the apartment complexes that are managed by management companies and things like that, I, I'll, again, I'll defer to Angela on this, but I think that in those circumstances, we are working with whoever is the responsible party for ensuring that that device is, is tested, so.
Yeah, it's mostly, it's a, it's a little bit of all of it. So it, when, when we first got in contact with the wrong person, if it was honestly like we would call a 7-Eleven and we would just get the employee who's working at 7-Eleven, they would say, I don't have any idea about this stuff. And so then we would actually look up more of a corporate number or the, the person who actually owns it. And then we would start a conversation with them. Same thing with these large apartment complexes. We would, whenever we first got in contact, it would be the person who was renting and they would say, well, I'm not the property owner. The second letter that we're going to be sending out this week was specifically changed to include language to say, if you're not the, the owner, your responsibility is to forward this to the property owner because your water will be shut off, so.
And I, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding the term multifamily because I'm, are we considering multifamily, anybody that owns or, you know, lives within a triplex?
A triplex would be considered multifamily, correct?
So that would be a multifamily home. So we, because in a lot of those instances within my district, there's a lot of people that are renting out those places. So they need to get in touch with the actual property owner in order to make sure that this gets done.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much on that.
You're welcome.
I'll just, I'll just add on that. We are, we are tracking all of our contacts. So we're a letter, a second letter, a phone call, a site visit. We want, when we get to the point where we're shutting off your water, we want to be able to show we've tried to contact you five or six times and we haven't been able to get anyone to respond. Typically, when the water shuts off, people respond.
Actually, do you mind if I ask a question on that? Because I am, my concern is on the multifamilies where is renter occupied? Is there some sort of health or EPA, something that requires that a property owner get into compliance with this? Because obviously, if the property owner doesn't live in the property, it's not that big of a deal to them that the water shut off. So I'm just concerned about, you know, potential renters and potential constituents that are affected by the red tag because they can't get a hold of the property owner.
Well, I think what we can do and based on Angela's summary of, of the ones that are outstanding is based on your questions tonight, I think we can do a more concerted effort to make sure that we're not just talking to the renter at those locations, that we are actually talking to an owner. And then that'll, again, distill it down a little bit further to maybe there's only a couple of them where we have not been able to actually contact the owner. But are, and at which point, if we'd be seeking any assistance, we could to find out who the owner is. But it, but it's good feedback and we'll, we'll incorporate that into our process.
I have a follow-up question probably, a couple to that maybe. What are the reasons that those who continue to not be in compliance give? Or is it, is it really you're not getting a hold of them? Do they ever say, I can't afford this? And then the second question would be, what does it cost to them to have one of these done? A 7-Eleven versus the Marx or maybe another place that's operating better?
I'm going to turn this over to Deputy Director Goodman because I think she's more in touch with the people who are being contacted. She might have some feedback on that.
So a lot of the people have, I wouldn't be able to speak to why they didn't. Some of the people actually are scheduled for later on in the year. And so for people that maybe their backflow gets tested every single December, we're trying to accelerate the schedule a little bit. Some of it is bad record, so we don't, we have devices in our system that are, scrap devices are removed. And so it actually is helping us to clean up our records. To my knowledge, no one has said anything about a cost being a prohibitive factor. In addition to contacting them, we also have provided information on backflow testers that are recommended by CDPHD, so we have resources available for them. And I think if it were to come to a hardship question, that would be something that we would, we would take a look at kind of on a case-by-case basis and maybe put that in the 10% that we don't have to get accomplished this year.
Thank you. And then these are certified documents that come to that we know are for real, truthful. This is what it is because it's a, this is a profession that does this, right? And has the background to do it, right? So just want to make sure that.
Yes, and so they, they have their qualifications. Sometimes people actually submit, they, they have to be certified by the state. So, so currently in utilities, we don't actually have anyone on staff that is a certified backflow tester. I believe there are a couple of folks in parks that we, that we have used that are certified. So it is, it is a, it is a thing to be certified.
It's helpful to know. I mean, when these things don't work and they really, you have, it's bad news when you have a backflow that doesn't work right.
Correct.
We had one in a building not far from here, maybe seven, eight years ago. It was pretty awful. And it was, and actually I don't believe they had it tested correctly or, you know, maybe they were fudging, someone was fudging. So I'm glad you're ratcheting it up in time to do this and it makes sense that you do it earlier so that you don't have to play this bad cop person at the end.
And it's, it's easier to keep track of if you have everything on a, on an annual basis instead of trying to remember a certain number in January, February, March, whatever. And yeah, it should, it should make it a lot easier to track it.
That's great. Any other concerns, questions? All right. Thank you for the presentation and the work you're doing on this.
Thank you.
All right. Our next one, you're staying here for. All right. Our next one, you're staying here for, so, this is the cost of service rates, um, which is informational tonight. And again, Utilities in South Platte Renew Director Peter Van Rijs is here, along with our Utilities Deputy Director of Business Solutions, is that right? Sarah Stone and Stan Tech Consultants Carol Molesky and Su Yan, is that right? Did I say it right? Rao will, are present, and perhaps one is online, or two. Um, so we're discussing information related to the connector district rate methodology to set outside city treatment rates and the resulting impact to inside sewer rates. Thank you. This has been a long time coming. We appreciate the work and what you've put together for us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We are excited to be here on this one. Um, I'd also, uh, like to, uh, just, uh, highlight in the audience, we have Dave Irish, who's the General Manager of Southgate, which is our biggest connector district. He is here today with Jason Mum, who's his financial, um, consultant, who has the, both Dave and, um, Jason have been integral in helping us with feedback as we evolve this process. And so when I get to the end of the, of my presentation, I'm gonna offer, um, for Dave to come up for a minute or two, just to give his feedback as, as to the process.
Great. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. This has been a long time coming, like you said. Uh, we are, um, excited to be here. On the, on the call remotely is Carol Molesky and Siwan Rao, who are with Stan Tech Consultant, who is our rate and fee consultant. To my left is Sarah Stone, our Deputy Director of Business Solutions. So we are gonna go through, um, if you recall, we talked about this back in May. We originally talked about this last September, um, and so we, uh, we're here to put forth what we believe are the, the final, um, the, the final numbers that we think we should move forward with, and, and get your feedback and, and discussion on, on whether we should continue to move forward with those numbers. So here's our schedule. Uh, we originally talked to, uh, we originally presented to council in, uh, March of this year, and then we met with the connector districts in May. And then we incorporated feedback through the summer that came largely from Southgate and, um, and their consultant. And then we had a second meeting with our connector districts on September 28th, and ultimately, we're here tonight to present the results of all that work. So Southgate, if you recall, we originally proposed, uh, a, a change in the multiplier from 1.05 to 1.2. And we provided all that information to the connector districts, um, including Southgate, as well as, uh, the other 10 connector districts to the, um, the City of Englewood. And we got some feedback in terms of our methodology and, and some of the data that's incorporated. Um, the, the main, the main points fell into a couple different categories. One was a, an acknowledgement of contributed funding. So there's TAP fee funding, and then there's the original grants that were provided as part of the, uh, original construction of the, of the plant back in 1975. And then the second piece was around methodology. One was incorporate, ensuring that we are incorporating, uh, uh, an accounting for, uh, different strength wastewater. And then ultimately, the methodology that we chose to, to end up with a multiplier as an outcome. And so we'll start with the grant review. Uh, Southgate forwarded us this information that was actually, um, uh, the original, uh, information from way back in 1975, as it relates to how the EPA and the state funded the, uh, plant. And as you can see here, there was about $18 million worth of, uh, funding that was provided to the, both the City of Littleton and the City of Englewood. Those are the, the two, uh, boxes in red there. That's the contribution for the plant. The other numbers on here are other things like the sewer line, Littleton's contribution, Englewood's land contribution. And ultimately, there was $18 million, um, that was provided. When you depreciate that $18 million, um, it depreciates to zero value after today. We use a 25-year depreciation schedule for assets at the plant, and 1975 is more than 25 years ago, so it, there was, there's no residual value associated with that $18 million. Um, we also, um, ensured that the, the City of Englewood actually contributed to the land, contributed the land for the, um, for the plant, because that's a non-depreciable asset. And, and so we wanted to make sure that that was accounted for as, as a, as a City of Englewood contributed asset, and that, um, we weren't, we didn't need to incorporate that into the methodology. The TAP review, so this is for each, for each new house or, um, single-family equivalent that comes onto the system throughout, not just the City of Englewood, but all the connector districts. There's a TAP that's paid to the City of Englewood for, for the, um, for the cost, for the, the capital buy-in to the, the South Platte Renew. Again, these are on a 25-year depreciation schedule. We actually were able to look back to 1982, um, and, and find data all the way back to 1982. We found one chart that went actually all the way back to the 50s, but that was just more for, um, that was more interesting than it was, um, necessarily something we incorporated, because it's well beyond the depreciation schedule. We made a request to the connector districts for any information that they had. It turns out that there was not a lot of information provided from the connector districts. I think they were relying on us. We were looking to see what their records said. It highlighted that we have a, another system process that we need to ensure that we're, we're doing a better job of tracking. I will say that we have detailed tracking from 2016 to 2021 that has occurred within, within the city. So the last five years, we have really good detailed data for TAP fees. But anything prior to 2016, it's not necessarily, um, it's not the best information. So we went off of billing data. Uh, the original assumption assumed that there was a, uh, residual value of those connection fees of 3.6 million. When we actually did the analysis, it actually reduced to 3.1 million. So we were, we were pretty close on our estimate, just went down slightly. And so we incorporated that real, real data into the model. Um, and then, and subtracted that credit as part of the, the plant value. The second thing was surcharge strength. So we have, in the City of Englewood, there are three customers that pay, uh, uh, surcharge, uh, fees for industrial strength wastewater. Um, the most significant of which is metal gold. There are dairy, so they have a different kind of waste that, that comes to the, the plant. And so we measure the, the constituents of that waste, and there's an assessment that goes along with that. We have a couple other smaller, um, facilities that have that same kind of assessment. But largely, our, our waste is pretty consistent, residential, um, commercial, nothing that's really strong industrial. And so the quest, the, the feedback was, how do we incorporate that? We actually do, we did incorporate that into the model that is being considered. And so we, um, we, we have ensured that that, that cha, that adjustment in that rate for that extra strength, um, wastewater is incorporated. The last thing that we did was, we changed from a cash basis with multiplier, which was the, which is what gave us a 1.2, to the new methodology, which is a utility basis with cash residual per the request. So if we get into detailed questions about those two methodologies, that's why I have people on the, on the call with me. Um, essentially, what it does is it, it moves it away from a multiplier. It moves it to actually determining what the, what the appropriate fees are, what the appropriate rates are for inside city and outside city, based on the industry guidance and methodology that's out there. Um, and so that's, so as we went back and, and took their feedback, we said, you know what? We'll, we'll look at it that way, because it is more consistent with, um, method, uh, industry methodology. We reviewed that with, uh, Southgate leadership directly, so, uh, Dave and, and Jason, to get their feedback on, on our adjustments. And then subsequently moved, uh, met with the remaining connector districts to go through the outcome of that analysis. So here's what it looks at. So there's an, there are inside city components to the rate, and there are outside, there are connector or outside city, um, components. We are looking at treatment only. So for inside city, we have a collections component to the rate, that that's for the collection system. Um, it gets more complicated, because part of the collection system is handled by the City of Englewood. The other part of the collection system is handed, handled by South Englewood Sanitation District, which is a different complication that this process is, has further highlighted. Um, however, it's not what we're gonna address today. Um, we do have a, a future, uh, plan to, to work through that, because this methodology directly affects that methodology, and subsequently, the costs that our, our customers will receive. But for what we're looking at, from a, a treatment rate perspective, is we're looking at treatment costs, South Platte Renew, and administration. So that's the billing and any other management of the connector district, um, connector district agreements or, um, customer service. And then what you can see is there's a, um, there, it's broken into capital costs and the, um, cost of service rates. So we look at, we look at the, um, return on the assets, and then depreciation, and then, and then the remaining value, um, as well as the outside cost versus the inside cost. And that's, that's a flow-based. So this is how our flow splits. We are actually, uh, somewhat unique in the sense that, um, most utilities that have outside city customers, they're, they're a smaller proportion than the inside city. We're unique in the sense that 71% of the, the treatment is actually outside city, so they, they're connector districts to the city. And then we have inside city treatment only, that's 7%. So that is that, that contingent of, of, of residents who, uh, directly discharged to South Englewood Sanitation District. And then we have inside city treatment and collection, that's 22%. That makes up our total 100% of our, our usage for wastewater. So here's what the analysis essentially resulted in is. From an outside city treatment perspective, we have a revenue requirement of $15.5 million. When you take that over build usage, we end up with a, a cost of service rate of $4.01. When we do an inside city treatment only, there's $900,000, build usage, you get to 264. Inside city treatment and collection is 4.1 million, uh, 1.2 usage, and then the inside city treatment and collection rate is 343. So what this means is, how, how does this affect rates? So outside city treatment rates are, based on this methodology, will go up 12%. Inside city treatment only will go down 22%. Inside city treatment and collection will go down 11%. And so what it does is it, it's, it, it ensures that we're collecting the revenue necessary to operate South Platte Renew and to operate the collection system. What it does is, based on the methodology, it assesses the distribution of who pays for what based on the owner versus non-owner methodology approach. And so this will be a one-time reset, essentially. So we set all these rates. There's an inside city, uh, there's the inside city treatment rate, the inside city treatment and collection rate, and then the outside city treatment rate. Those will all get reset. And then the 4.5% per year plan that we've talked about in the 10-year financial plan starts off of those new numbers. And so we reset those numbers, and then we move forward with the financial plan based on what we have talked about in the past. So if you, if you think to, if we hadn't done this process, we were looking at a 4.5% increase across the board on those numbers that you see on the left-hand column, which is 357, 340, and 385. And so realist, in reality, the net change for an outside city is about a 7.5% increase over what would have, if we didn't do any, if we don't do anything, what would, uh, occur for 2022. And the inside city treatment correspondingly would, has a, as a, an additional net reduction of 4.5%, because they're not seeing that, that, um, that increase in January. So that just gives you a sense for what this, this reset actually does to rates. So inside city customers go down, outside city go, customers go up. But we established the methodology based on the industry guidance. And in reality, when the, the connector districts, when we first proposed this, the connector districts were looking at a 15, 15% increase in, in June of this year, which is what we were proposing initially. Um, in reality, it, it now goes down to essentially 7.5, because the four, because of the 4.5% increase they would have seen. So there was a, there was a reduction for the connector districts. There's a corresponding adjustment for inside city customers to account for the fact that, I think the thing that, um, there's been feedback all along, is the city has made this tremendous investment in this, this facility. How do the customers, uh, yield a, a return on that investment? And this is, this is utilizing that, that methodology how we get there. And so from a sewer bill perspective, this is what it looks like. Outside city treatment goes up, sewer bill goes up about 280. Um, the inside city treatment goes down about $5. The inside city treatment and collection goes down about $3, and this is per month. Now, the thing with the inside city treatment only is, you still have the South Englewood Sanitation District assessment, which is based on the inside city treatment rate. And so with the inside city treatment rate going down, they're gonna correspondingly see, and, and they brought this to our attention, that they're gonna see a corresponding reduction in their revenue, because they are based on a multiplier. Their multiplier was 1.6. Last year, it went to 1.55. We have reached out to them to get a, to get, um, their methodology, much like what we've done here. And, um, we have not, the response was that they don't have a methodology. And so we are, it's actually the response we got. Um, and so we are, we are planning for, if the, if the, if the base number that their, that their treatment goes down, then what does that mean for the multiplier that they're gonna propose for next year? And then how we correspondingly respond on behalf of our citizens. And so even though the inside city treatment looks like it's gone down substantially, there's a, there's a corresponding amount that still is addressed by South Englewood Sanitation District. In reality, if they kept the multiplier the same, then in reality, the inside city treatment only should go down, um, even more, because the, the base number goes down a little bit more. And, and I, I mean to do this every time. Full disclosure, I live in South Englewood Sanitation District, part of the city. I've lived in the City of Englewood, and I am served by South Englewood Sanitation District. So I just want to make sure that that's always part of this discussion, so that, um, you're aware that I, I do live in the district. So here's how it looks from our, um, compare, bill comparison. We're still way to the left, which is, which is much lower. Um, and so it, where the Englewood was proposed, we're, we're going slightly down from, from that, um, on a monthly basis. So there is a reduction to, there's a net reduction for, for residents on their utility bill, from a water-sewer perspective. Moving forward, um, we are here to talk tonight to get some feedback from the council. We're gonna meet with the Water and Sewer Board tomorrow. Typically, we would do this in the other order, but because of, of timing and, and budget timing, um, we went slightly out of order on this. Um, but fortunately, the meetings are really close. First reading is, we would have planned for these new rates would be October 18th. Second reading would be November 1st. And then, uh, we would move to this connector district rate-based methodology versus multiplier. So the, the 1.05 in the code for INI goes away, and we set, we reset based on this, this methodology. Additionally, we, um, would look at, we would make, we look at this every five years. And part of looking at it every five years is what's called a true-up. And this was some of the feedback we got from the connector districts. And so we have budget numbers, and we have plan numbers, and then actuals occur for five years. There's a way to look back at what the actual numbers were. And then if, if the connector district paid more, or the city paid more, there's a true-up that then gets incorporated into the rate as the next, next five years moves forward. And so, um, we think that that's actually a, an approach that, again, takes what's a fair process and makes it even more fair, because it's based on real numbers. And I think that, um, it, it benefits both outside city and inside city, because if there is a disparity on the budgeted numbers or the, the costs, then we, then we go off of actuals. And then, um, we would look at improving that future TAP fee, a connection and accounting, and then ultimately, looking at potentially a monthly, uh, billing for connector district. billing for connector districts. And so this is the point in time where I'm going to invite Dave Irish with South Gate up to provide a little bit, a couple minutes of thoughts on this process, and then just an opportunity to address council.
Thank you, Peter. Good evening, everybody. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Peter and his staff, Carol and, and their staff for all of their work. I am general manager of South Gate Water and Sanitation Districts, one of the, the connectors. And we provide water and sewer service from Cherry Hills, Greenwood Village, Centennial, and Lone Tree west of I-25. So we're a fairly big district. We also do parts of unincorporated Douglas County and unincorporated Arapahoe County. So we have six entities that we deal with on a regular basis. And I, and I do want to second the comment that, that someone made that we've come a long way in a couple of years under some new, some new guidance here. And it's been refreshing and a good experience for us. I want to, once again, really appreciate their taking feedback and being open to looking at a little bit of a different approach. We've done a lot of this kind of work with other entities, Denver Water, et cetera. And through that, those exercises, you, you come to, you know, I'm not a, a real number cruncher and a smart guy like, like these guys, but they, they do a good job of, of educating me on how, on how these things work. And what I really can understand and what I do appreciate is using real numbers and doing a true-up after a certain period of time. It protects Englewood and it protects us. If, if, if expenses were higher and revenues were lower than we expected in budget numbers over the last five years, there'd be a true-up and, and connector districts would have an additional charge. If operations were good and less monies were spent and more money was, was taken in, then there'd be a credit on that. And, and what that does is then, then that protects us from, you know, some kind of municipal budgeting. And I've been in this, this world a long time, right? Budgeting isn't, isn't an easy thing, especially when you're, you're budgeting things that are operational-based and emergency-based, right? You do your best job, but every year can be a, can be a different year. And that's what this methodology does instead of just kind of a, a blank multiplier as it looks at real numbers. And we'll have a true-up eventually. And kind of, as you know, South Gate is an entity we don't pay, except for just our, our office is a, is a customer, right? So our effort has just kind of been due diligence on making sure that our, our, our customers are looked after. Because, you know, this is, is, is a very complicated issue. And, you know, people, to be honest, especially with everything going on right now, I think looking into what's happening on their sewer rates is probably down on the list, right? So, so kind of on their behalf, we're involved with Peter. He was very open at bringing us in early on. Jason has helped me at South Gate and at other districts that I've managed for many years on our own rates. And so I trust him a lot, and him and Peter worked well together. So I just wanted to give my thanks for the cooperation that we've seen and the, and the communication between both of us. I think that's how it needs to work going forward. I'm looking forward to that. I think that we're all working on very old connector agreements. And so sometime in the future, it would be fantastic to, to get some new connector agreements that would match all the connectors to and be, be more, more updated. So thank you very much for the moment. And, and again, I appreciate it.
Thank you for joining us this evening, too. Are you open for questions? No? Director Van Rye, or do you want us to?
Yeah, yeah. So we are, thank you, Dave.
You might want to stay there because they may ask questions, if you don't mind. Are you ready for questions?
Yes, yes. We're, we're open for feedback and discussion.
Councilmember Ward.
First question. South Gate is not on our rate comparison chart. Is there a reason for that?
Actually, so there's not really a defined reason. We actually went, we selected a half a dozen different adjacent-like utilities that, there's no reason we didn't incorporate them. We just went with a distribution that kind of showed what, what the Denver, the Front Range utility rates are. We could definitely incorporate it.
Okay. I, I think that would be interesting information for us to have.
Yeah, I can give some feedback real quickly. The, we don't have, of course, we don't have a treatment charge since you guys do the treatment. And we haven't done a multiplier because the multiplier approach, again, is, is something that somebody sets forth, and then that just rides over time. To be honest, it doesn't have a lot of check, a lot of balance. It does not relate it to even real numbers sometimes over time. And so what we have is, we have a very small mill levy, a half of a mill. And so that funds a lot of our, our operations. Because what we do is, we have to maintain, repair, and replace the collection system. And we have almost 300 miles of sewer pipe, South Gate does. And so we have a half of a mill, which for a typical house is between 30 and 60 bucks at the most, even the Cherry, even the Cherry Hills guys. And our regular service fee is a little over $3 a month. So, so when some of these other districts are hundred dollars, hundreds of dollars a year, we're about 36 bucks.
Okay. So your, your rate model is different just based on the fact that you're supported by a mill levy rather than just strictly on fees?
A mill levy, and that's right. We have a small mill levy. A lot of these other districts do too. But, but it's all about kind of how, how your, your finances are put together. Also, we have good reserves, and we use interest on our reserves as part of our revenue, right? So that offsets some of that as well. So, so we're only charging the customers about $36 a year, and you collect that for us on your annual bill. So on your annual bill that you bill people, we don't, South Gate doesn't bill anyone. You bill all of our customers and collect our service charge and remit that to us about once a year.
Okay. And I have a second question, if I may.
Go ahead.
The multiplier is a model that I understand because it says residents inside Englewood pay this much, and residents outside Englewood, based upon the fact that they have, that Englewood has made the investment in the plant, along with our partner Littleton, are charged a surcharge because they live in a place where they haven't made that investment. But yet they benefit from the asset that we built. Essentially, that's the purpose of a multiplier, if I understand correctly?
Yeah. Well, I mean, the, so the multiplier, and this is something that through this process, I've, I've grown to understand, is the multiplier is an outcome. And so essentially, when, when we look at the, when we look at the true distribution based on the methodology of where the, what it, what it looks at is, it looks at our weighted average cost of capital. So if we look at how much we could be investing that money separately, what we would get as a return, that's part of what goes into how we determine what the val, what the lost opportunity value is for the, for the inside city residents, for that money that's, that's utilized for the, for the plan itself. And so what we, what the, the methodology is very detailed in how it looks at all those aspects of, of costs, contributed cash, contributed assets, that return on investment to then establish what, what value this inside city residents gain from being the owner of the system. And so the owner come, with the owner comes the risk of default. So if, if we, we have to issue all the, all the loans. And so if we default on a loan, it's not the connector districts that have to deal with it. It's the city of Englewood. So there's an inherent higher risk to being an owner than there is to being a, a non-owner because of the sheer fact that we ultimately, the buck stops with the city of Englewood. I don't think, so we're getting, we're getting into, if there's, if there's, did I miss something on that? Okay.
I, I think you just explained the new methodology in a nutshell. Because the, the principle seems to be similar, but the multiplier is more of an arbitrary way of expressing that?
The, the problem with the multi-
This is, by design, is supposed to-
I'm sorry, let me back-
-mathematically prove the difference in cost, essentially?
So the problem with the multiplier and the way we applied the multiplier to begin with is, if you look on this slide, it says inside city treatment rate of 340. And so the problem with that, the multiplier, is it just assumed that that number was initially right. And this, this other methodology looks at that, looks at that initial starting number. And then you can calculate a multiplier off of the, off of the 264 versus 4, and it's a higher multiplier. But what it does is, it actually looks at setting that, establishing that initial inside city treatment rate based on the methodology. So the multiplier off of 340, and this is the challenge that the connector districts were having, was the base number's wrong. And so if we, if we start it with an incorrect base number, then we're collecting too much. We're collecting more than what's necessary to meet the needs of the, the treatment process. And, and, and we're, we're over-collecting at that point in time. So what this methodology does is it resets that starting point for both inside city and outside city based on the methodology that's in, that's an industry-guided methodology. Does that make sense? So this, it changes the starting point.
Okay. Sort of. Like I said, this is complicated. The multiplier is very simple and easy to understand. So I'm just wondering how I'm going to explain this methodology to citizens as I travel the city. And I'm having a hard time understanding it myself. So that's, that's the problem I'm having.
Well, I, I, I think maybe the, the explanation is that we, we look at the, we look at inside city rate and an outside city rate. And then those rates account for the fact that the city owns the asset. And the outside city are essentially customers that, that gain the benefit of that initial Englewood investment and ownership.
Okay. Thank you.
I hope that helps.
It does. Yeah.
Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Director Van Rye. And I'm sorry, I missed your name, sir.
Dave Irish.
Dave Irish?
Yeah.
Good to meet you. I'm actually going to piggyback on the multiplier question because I understand that we're lowering the, the base number, the starting point. But the 1.2 multiplier is still an industry standard though, right? From AWWA. Is it not, or?
The multiplier, the eight, the, the 1.2 was the outcome of the other methodology that we started with. And so we started with that methodology. It resulted in 1.2. You can essentially be, your multiplier can be anywhere based on your, based on your, your data that goes into the calculation. So 1.2 just happened to be our result. And, and the, the problem with, with it was the, it was based on, it was multiplying 1.2 off the wrong initial number. And that's, that was the, that was the, the feedback and frustration that the connector districts had, which was, we don't have a problem with you looking at this from an industry methodology standpoint. We have a, we have a, a challenge, we have a problem with the fact that you're using the, this other methodology that doesn't more accurately define that split between inside city and outside city.
Okay. Thank you, Director. But we, we had a multiplier before as well, though, right? Before the 1.2, it was 1.05 or somewhere along those lines, right? So was that also incorrect in using that type of multiplier?
So that multiplier was, that, that was a different multiplier. That was a multiplier that was established many years ago. And the 0.05 was to account for INI, which is inflow and infiltration. So that assumes that the pipes that are in Dave's district are leaky, and there's a certain amount of, of stormwater that gets in, which then results in an increased flow. And so that additional 5% was, as you look, is, is written in the code, is specifically for INI. There was nothing ever in the code to account for this industry methodology of owner versus non-owner. Because we look at actual flow data, flow data, the INI is actually inherently embedded into the analysis. So it, I don't know exactly how the 1.05 was initially established many years ago. But this methodology replaces that and inherently incorporates the INI piece into what's an industry-defined approach.
I appreciate, thank you very much for the explanation.
I think Councilmember Anderson, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Van Rye and Mr. Irish for presentation, helping us understand how this all played out. The question I have is about the, the agreements between, between Englewood or the, the treatment plant and the connector districts that allow, the, the agreements, I guess, allow for periodic reevaluation of this. You do mention that this is in, in the code. How does that all work? And how can we ensure? It sounds like if, based on this, that, that the multipliers could float over time depending on the need, the financial needs of the, of, of the treatment plant. So how is that going to be reevaluated? And what, what is in the contracts that allow for that process?
So I think this gets back to Dave's comment of, we'd like to look at the amendment, maybe an amendment to the, the agreements to memorialize this approach. And so right now, the agreement has, I believe it's section six, that says we can charge rates that are appropriate. So that's why we went down this path of, of utilizing industry guidance to establish what those rates are. So that we're not just arbitrarily saying, here's what the rate is, and you guys have to pay it. We, we have that, we have that ability already written into the agreement. What, what we want to do as part of this is then memorialize that in all the agreements, that this is the approach we're going to take. So that five years from now, someone doesn't forget that we're supposed to do a true-up. We're supposed to reanalyze this with actual data and then do some kind of a true-up one way or another, whether it's to the benefit of Englewood or to the benefit of the connector districts. But it, but it utilizes that actual data. So we have to, we'll have to change the code because the code right now calls for a 1.05 multiplier. We would get away from that, and we would define the process as outlined in, as outlined here, and then ultimately outlined in the agreement, which we would then work through all eight of those agreements, or 10 of those agreements, to ensure that there's consistency either on a completely new agreement or a, an amendment to the agreement. In talking with the city attorney's office, we think that that, you know, is, if we're looking at, like, that could be a, over the next year process. We did an initial, as, as part of the initial work on the rates and fees, we did an initial comparison. We have a, a comparison table of all the agreements to, to try and understand where there is consistency between the agreements. So we've done that initial legwork. The next step would be taking this information and any other revisions that we think would be appropriate, and then either coming forward with an amendment or those new agreements. We think that's about a year-long process.
Good. Yeah. I think that's really important is to make sure that this is, this is looked at, you know, whether it's every five years or whatever, just to make sure both parties are, are getting a fair deal on, on the rates. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Director Van Rye and Mr. Irish. I do appreciate the work. And ultimately, this is really exciting because what I see in this is that not only are the connector districts getting the fair, true cost of service, the citizens in Englewood now, also by doing it this way, are getting the fair, true cost of service. And I, I think that is going to be very helpful for us. I mean, I, in our process, over the last couple of years, probably, I've been so frustrated. Prices keep going up and up and up. And so if we begin to evaluate on what it is, so my question would be, what about then the, the capital fee that we are charging? Is that in water or is that in sewer?
That's in water. So that's independent of this.
Okay. So actually, thank you so much for this work. I greatly appreciate it. And I, what I'm seeing is that it is more fair. But we will still, as the owner, have capital expenses that the districts will not.
No, it, that is all incorporated into the plan. And so these, this, these rates are, are assumed that we're utilizing the financial plan that we've already laid out. And that financial plan on the sewer side, if you remember the, the model, that it's, it's blue and it's, it's got the numbers for 10 years, is, that assumes a 4.5% per year to keep up with the capital investment that is required for the largely South Platte Renew. I will say the other, the other piece that we would look at on this, if we, if we do move to monthly billing, there is a, we would be looking at some additional costs for additional billing staff because we'd move from 11,000 accounts to 50,000 accounts. And so that's something that we have, we have planned- And so that's something that we have, we have planned for and are, are anticipating and based on, um, uh, Dave's feedback, that's something that they would appreciate as well.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, and I'm finally realizing why I know you. We'll talk later, Mr. Irish, but my son used to run track with your son. I keep looking at you going, "Why do I know you?"
There you go.
A long time ago, but I, can we go back to slide fourteen for a minute?
Yep. I think so. Uh-oh.
It's all right, well, I think it's fourteen on your slides, but it's the one that shows the, uh, the Halloween colors of the, of the bar craft.
That one.
Prices. This still seems incredible to me, the pricing. I mean, you're sure that the base of what you've got is correct for what we need, right?
Yeah, we, uh, I, I initially went back to, uh, the team and said, "Okay, so we're sure we, we, we got this," right? And, and based on the analysis, that we, we do. And so I think part of what you, what this process does is it, it, it changes the, where the revenue comes from. So some, more of the revenue comes from the larger group of customers, which is the Connector Districts, and less of the revenue is required to come from the, the inside-city, which then helps that, this is where the Connector District model for the city helps the city maintain competitive rates in accordance with industry sta- industry guidance and, and, um, methodologies.
Huge economy of scales, it seems to me, right? I mean, you look at Castle Pines, it's probably a very small district, right? And they're all having to share the burden.
Yep, a lot of it has to do, a lot of it actually has to do with that. It's timing of when it was built and it's, it's, it's the amount of, um, amount of customers that, that are, that the costs are distributed over.
This would be a slide that I think would be really helpful on social media at some point.
Yeah, I, we can, we can make sure that it's up. I believe, do we have it on the website?
I mean, you've put it in our, it was in something, no?
We will, we will make sure it's, it's there.
Anything? Yeah. So I, I applaud the work that you've done on this and, you know, changing the methodology makes it clearer and you all can explain why it is where it is. I think that's what's needed. Um, if you can't explain what we did before and we have this multiplier, but we don't know what the base was, that just seems really flawed all the way around.
Yeah, I thi- I think one of the most, one of the most important things is, um, you know, the Connector Districts are customers. And, and so we want to make sure that the customers feel like that the methodology fits with, with what the industry guidance is. And so I think that having their input and their, um, them engaged through this process is, is really what, it's, we need them to understand this process as much as, as, as anything because as we start to get into the details of this, I, I can explain so far before I get way out over my ski tips and I'm, I'm crashing down the side of the hill. That's why I have Sarah and Carol to help explain those things. Um, but I think really the, 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 the message is, is that inside-city customers get a value for this and we're finally instituting a methodology that accounts for that value.
Yeah. Thank you, I appreciate all the work you've done on this. Any more questions, counsel, or feedback? Nope? Great. Thanks for the work you've done on this.
Thank you.
All right, I think we're scheduled for a break and I would normally say we're so close, let's not take it, but I really could use a break, so. And we'll come back and do Agenda Item Ten. So let's take a five-minute if you can, come back at the top of the hour.
If all of council could take their seats, we'll finish up here very shortly. So we do not have an executive session tonight, but we move on to Agenda Item Ten, which is reports from board and commission council liaisons. Does anyone have any tonight to share with us? Member Anderson, kick us off.
Thank you, Mayor. The, uh, I had, um, Housing Authority meeting this week and the one thing of note I wanted to report to you guys is that the Housing Authority is, um, voted to pass the resolution directing the, um, Director of the Housing Authority to create a separate nonprofit that would be under the authority of the Housing Authority Board. And the purpose of the nonprofit is to separate out properties that are owned by, um, the Housing Authority from HUD-funded properties. Um, that will allow, the, essentially, it would be a, a nonprofit for the purpose of development. Um, and so they could utilize the funds that come in from those properties to buy more properties or maintain the current properties without having it tangled up with the money from HUD or have it at risk of, you know, complicating HUD funds or something like that. So, um, I thought that was worth pointing out because it is kind of, I think it's fairly common among housing authorities to have these separate development, um, nonprofits, uh, but it is a bit of a, a new, a new setup that I thought was worth council hearing about and, and being aware of. They have yet to decide whether that will be, um, the same board could run both organizations, I think, or it could be that the Housing Authority Board appoints a separate board to run the, the nonprofit with different requirements than the Housing Authority Board. Um, but they haven't decided any of that yet and it'll of course be, um, be voted on at a future meeting after they work through all the legal questions around it and what would be most beneficial for a development board. That's all I have.
Thank you. Member Russell, are you next or did you want to ask any questions?
I, I want to ask a question and I would like to ask a question of the city attorney also in the fact that, um, the Housing Authority Board is, how, how accountable are they to city council? I mean, city council appoints the board and do, because they are expending public funds, uh, what type of report would have to come before the public, um, in order to do this? I don't, I'm, I'm concerned about the legality of what they're intending to do and the proof that it was where, where the money came from to buy these properties.
Councilmember Russell, that's a good question. Um, first, let me look into it to get to a more thorough answer. Um, but in general, their requirements to report to city council are contained either within their bylaws or within city code. Um, generally regarding city boards, the city council's authority is appointment and that's how you, um, hesitate to say maintain control, but, but that's, um, your role is to appoint the members and then, um, implement municipal code as it applies to that board. Uh, as far as expenditures of, of city funds, um, generally, they would have the expenditure authority as provided to it by city council during the budgeting process. Um, but that's just a, a general overview of, um, city council's role as it applies to boards. So let me look into this specific board and review their bylaws and, and get a specific response to you. Uh, if acceptable, I'll just treat this as a council request and go through that process.
I would appreciate that and I just, I'm curious if they, if, and they may not be accountable to the city council, but, um, would they be accountable to HUD before they could do this, to the housing and urban development? If, also, if you could find out that answer to it, I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Um, Councilmember Russell, do you have any boards and commission reports?
Um, I don't think I have any board and commission reports. I'm trying to think if there was.
You can come back to it, too.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember requested, do you have any tonight? Mayor Protim Sierra just says you're taking a bite. No? All right. Councilmember Ward?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Wink?
Nothing to report tonight.
I just have a question for you, Councilmember Wink. It, when does the Cultural Arts Committee meet? Is it like next week or the following week or?
Good question, Mayor. They met last week and I, oh, I had a work function that night and so I notified, but yes, good question, it was actually last week.
Okay. I wasn't asking because I knew you weren't there or anything. I just, I wasn't sure when they meet and I was, I'll ask.
Correct, first Wednesday typically.
Okay. All right, I was, uh, we had a, we have a Dr. Cog some decision-making, but, um, a couple of things went unanimous this last week and I haven't, I, I had to leave before that. Were you on, were you on that call? No, you weren't on that one neither. Okay, I will bring back to you what it was because I left before that final vote, but apparently it's the first time we've had, well, we've had a lot of pretty strong votes, but unanimous is pretty good regarding, yeah, some transportation issues. But, um, there, that group is, uh, really taking a look at the twenty-fifty vision, which is crazy to think about, you know, thirty years from now, but they're redoing this whole vision plan. Um, and I think the public hearing mostly has been done on parts of it. been done on parts of it, but we can, we can give you more information as it goes along. It's kind of the path that they set for the entire region, for the way that money is going to be distributed and the goals that we have, and I think the biggest issue that has been tossed around is how to handle the pollution, the air quality issues that we continue to not meet the standards of nationally and haven't for a very, very long time. So figuring out how to do that, especially when we can't control some of it, like fires from other states, which are so unfortunate. So, anyway, that's a major challenge right now. And I, Metro Mayor's Caucus met this last week, too, and had, basically had presentations from another, a number of groups. A lot of things around housing and affordability and trying to figure out how do we join together as a community to handle that overall. But yeah, so that's, that's my report. Anything else? Member Russell, did you remember anything? None of those retirement funds?
Not for board, not for board and commission. We're still going to have council members' choice, right?
Yep, we are. That'll be next. So if you want to start out, you can. We have to, let's look at the proclamation first. So, so moving on to the, yeah, councilmember's choice. So we have this proclamation on Community Planning Month, and it would coincide with also recognizing some of the awards that have been won by people, too, right? So, but anybody have any trouble with this particular Planning Month proclamation? Councilmember Anderson?
No particular trouble with it, but I'm curious, did this originate from Community Development or City Manager's Office? Where did this get suggested from?
Yes, I think it was Community Development that requested this, but I believe that this council has done this for a number of years, and will also have, you know, Public Works appreciation, and various departments will have these throughout the year.
Okay.
And typically, they do start at the staff level.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? Are we all okay with this, then? No disagreements with it? All right, you'll see it next week, I believe. So, on to councilmembers' choice. We'll start with you, Member Russell, since, probably what you remembered.
Thank you, Mayor. So, and part of this is I don't remember, when we talked about the ARPA funds, did we talk about that at the last council meeting?
Two weeks ago, we did.
Two weeks ago? So it was a study session? So, my question is, I was over at the Malle Center, and I was told that, is the city offering $100 for people to get vaccinated? And is that coming from ARPA funds?
It is.
So, now, the problem is becoming, there are people that have already been vaccinated and are upset that they can't get the $100. And I think that's problematic. I do. Because what I see is happening is that we are exploiting the poor people, and so I am really opposed to that. Either we go back, if people have already been vaccinated and they're residents of Inglewood, I believe that we should give them the $100 also. So, that's, that's what I think about it. I have, then I just, I have a couple of council requests, or perhaps, I have gotten a couple of calls from people that travel Quincy quite a bit, and there are a lot of people running the stop signs, probably between Broadway and Galapago on the side streets, mostly going south. Some of them have almost created accidents because people on Quincy are slamming their brakes. It happens a lot in the morning, during rush hour, and probably between 4:15 and 5 o'clock in the evening. And apparently, there are, there is at least one person that it's almost like a game, and so I'm wondering if we could find out more about that, and also, if that is happening, could we set up something just to address that?
Go ahead, manager.
Thank you. If I can just ask for clarifications, you mentioned Quincy, Broadway, and Galapago, but is it Quincy between Broadway and Galapago?
Really, it's probably, yes, mostly between, not Broadway itself, but probably Tacoma, more like Galapago here on, and some of the streets, Delaware maybe. They're mostly going from north, they're, they're traveling on the side street north to south, and they just don't stop at the stop sign and just go right through, or they go out and slam on the brakes, and which I think is very dangerous, so.
We can definitely increase enforcement at that area and put out our speed trailers as well, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. And, let's see, I had one other, I think that's it. I can't, I can't remember what the other one was. If I do, I'll let you know. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Quista, anything? Nothing? Mayor Pro Tim Sierra? Member Ward?
Nothing to report.
Member Wink?
No report.
All right. I do have a question. It's related to budget and our strategic plan and including budget supplemental around diversity, equity, and inclusion work, and I think we affirmed a plan for that, and I just was wondering if you could give us all an update, because I know it's coming up, and just so I make sure everybody knows.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I think you're referring to the budget supplemental back in April.
Right.
You and the rest of council approved some funding for a diversity, equity, inclusion strategic plan, and so staff, we have a staff committee for DEI, and they reviewed and then interviewed and selected, rather, just selected, a company from a couple of proposals we got called the Equity Project, and actually, coincidentally, they're coming next week because that project is about to kick off, and so we wanted to start with council, just to give you all an overview of that work, and so they will, they're actually on the study session agenda for next week, just to give you an overview of what is DEI. I know there were some questions when the Budget Review Committee came to you. There were some questions from council about what it actually is, DEI, and so they'll be overviewing that as well as the work that they plan to do here, so.
Great. Thanks for the update. And so that's it for me. How about you, city manager? Whoops, sorry. Oh, I did. I didn't, I started with Councilmember Russell.
Thank you, but no report tonight.
No report. Oh, come on, make it better. You were just waiting. All right. Thanks, Mayor Pro Tim, for pointing that out. All right, city manager?
Since it isn't earlier night, I'm going to give a little more robust report than I usually do. Apologies, but I do want to let you know that we plan to be back in council chambers for your training for the new technology, October 25th, so we're getting close to being back to that sense of normalcy. And then, the first council meeting being November 1st, where we'll be able to use the system, but we'll be doing some testing on the 25th and training for you all. I want to give a few reports on homelessness. All cities, as I may have mentioned, have adopted the Homelessness Action Plan, so that's good news from the tri-cities. The three cities are moving forward with discussions with Arapahoe County about kind of the organizational structure of, we know we're going to have some funds for staffing. The county is talking about some sort of homelessness administrator, and then the various coordinators from subregions of the county, we would be, tri-cities would be a subregion, would have a homelessness coordinator. And so we are talking about a new IGA with the county, between the cities and the county, of what that would look like, and we, the tri-cities homelessness policy committee this week, the county will be coming to present on some of that, so we're excited about that work. We, I also wanted to let you know, we're a little disappointed because the earmark that we had submitted for in Congress is stalled because Congress just keeps passing continuing resolutions on the budget, but we had requested a million-dollar earmark for the Bridge House Ready-to-Work program and facility, and so that's kind of stalled, but we still have commitments from the three cities to really fund that in a robust manner, so we hope, and Bridge House is doing their own fundraising as well for that. It remains to be seen where that facility would be located, but we do want that somewhere in the tri-cities. And then I also wanted to let you know that I have forwarded today to the Inglewood Housing Authority Innovative Housing Concepts, some funding opportunities that I'm sure they had seen from the state, and I know the Metro Mayor's Caucus has been talking about this, and you forwarded some information, too, but I forwarded that to Inglewood Housing Authority just to say, we are ready and willing to support and assist you in obtaining more funds because there is a tremendous amount of housing funding right now that the state is sitting on for all sorts of purposes, and so we just want to make Lindsay and her team know that we, let them know that we are ready and willing to assist with that. A couple of budget items, as was mentioned, we are moving forward with the ARPA resolution. Member Russell correctly did recall that council did, one of the first things, the first discussion that we had about ARPA, we had a, I think it was a 4-3 discussion, where you all did say yes, if we're going to do vaccines, you know, vaccine incentives, we have to start now. That was definitely, you know, it wasn't hotly debated, but a debated topic, and four councilmembers did give direction to move forward, so that, the usage of that has been somewhat limited. We've had about 100 people. I would say they're really from all socioeconomic groups. It has not been predominantly low-income folks, and in fact, I'd say most of the people who have complained so far have been more affluent members of the community. We've taken a number of those complaints, tried to help explain that had we opened the incentive up to everybody, you know, we would have run out of money on the first day because thousands of people had already been vaccinated, so we couldn't, it wouldn't be an incentive if it was available to everyone, was the thought, so. Does that answer some of the question, Member Russell?
It answers my question. I was one of the three people that was against it, so I really, I really think that we could have used that $30,000 more effectively elsewhere. So, but I just, I think it's creating problems. So, anyway, I, when I was over at Simon Center, you hear all the chatter over there about what's going on, so I just brought it up because of that. Thank you.
Well, I do appreciate the comment, and we do know that that, that those incentives and various aspects of the vaccination have been, you know, very controversial throughout the country, and certainly we're no exception to that, but we do hope that we have, you know, vaccinated approximately 100 people that have gotten the vaccination, that were incentivized by that and other information that we've tried to get out to the public. Also on budget, I wanted to let you, just give you a heads up that based on this connector district discussion, we may be needing to bring you a budget amendment after the new budget year starts because the connector districts, now that they know that Inglewood has monthly billing, they are starting to ask for monthly billing. So we expect an official request from a number of our connector districts. That would mean that we need to add at least two different, two additional utility billing clerks, so I'd just like to tell you if we already see a budget amendment on the horizon and let you know about that. Next, organizational culture. We are launching some efforts next week in organizational culture with some assessments that'll be going on over the next couple of months, as well as some new training with an organization called Choose People, and we're sending all 100 and, I think it's 150 or so of our supervisors through that training, our leadership team included, so we'll have three cohorts, meeting once a month, and getting some really robust training around really helping our employees feel known, matter, and included. I think I mentioned to you during my annual review, some of the organization feels like that the pace is to the point, we are failing to, you know, focus on people, so we really want to make sure that all of us, from myself to all frontline supervisors, really know how to listen, take feedback, and also, you know, help our employees feel known, included, and know that their work matters. Next, we, let's see, we already covered DEI, so I was going to mention that. So thank you for the question, Mayor, and we look forward to that discussion with you all. If I didn't mention, the company that's been selected is called the Equity Project, and actually, our keynote speaker at CML, if you were able to go back and watch any of those sessions, one of our keynotes was the president of that organization, so it's something that CML and cities across the state, and of course, the United States, are looking very, very closely at to make sure that we, you know, really are being inclusive in our work from all levels. So, thank you for bringing that up, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you. I wanted to ask if in that climate survey or work that you're going to do, will there be ways to gather how people like to be appreciated? I, it's come, I may have been reading a few things recently about how we don't always know what people like, and to find out what, what helps them feel like they belong through forms of appreciation, and of course, you know, raises are one, but usually, it's not that that really makes the difference. It's other kinds of things.
That's a great question. At one of the sessions that I went to at ICMA last week, we, there was, there's actually a free assessment tool from one of the speakers there and their company, and I believe that it does cover that, but we also, as part of our, when we did our task forces, our employee task forces throughout 2020, one of those task forces was the Employee Recognition Task Force, and they did a survey of all employees about how they wanted to be recognized. So we actually, you know, we had a whole list of choices plus other, and we really got a lot of good feedback from that in terms of what, and we actually modified, I believe, our employee picnic as a result of that, to what kinds of prizes and other things that we were giving out based on that. So we've done some of that work internally, but we'll definitely continue that.
Well, thank you. I think, I think you actually told us that when you were talking about the picnic, so that's great that you've kind of gotten already some of that. Wonderful. Anything else? All right, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.